Hello there. Welcome to the Town of Cordera Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, October 9th. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you would announce the role, please.
Commissioner Metcalf?
Here.
Commissioner Bundy?
Commissioner Chase?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Bendel?
Here.
Thank you. At this point, if there's a topic on which any member of the audience would like to comment that is not on tonight's agenda, you have three minutes to make such a comment. If so, please step up to the microphone. Seeing none, then we'll say there's no public comment other than what's on the agenda tonight, and we'll go right to our business item. And this is a preliminary review. This is not an item that the commission will take action on tonight. 111 Lucky Drive, considered a memory care facility. This is a preliminary review of proposed 71-room, two-story memory care facility at 111 Lucky Drive. So this is like a study session, so to speak.
In fact, it is a study session, actually. As has been our practice with the commission for the last several years, we've encouraged applicants at an early part of the process, at the conceptual stage of the process, as they consider potential redevelopment of property, to come and essentially check in with the planning commission, also with members of the public, hear comments, and provide some or receive feedback that may help in the further development of plans as they seek to go ahead and redevelop property. So this is an informational study session. I want to be very clear, as you, Chairman Chase, just mentioned, there is no action this evening. It's really an opportunity for members of the community, also obviously the commission, to gain an understanding of the applicant's proposal, provide preliminary feedback on issues of policy, planning, and design early in the applicant's planning, plan development Comments are intended to serve as guidance only, based on information available at this time, and do not substitute for any required public hearings before the planning commission or town council that may be required as part of application review in the future. So the applicant is here this evening to provide, and the applicant's architect is here, to provide a presentation regarding the concept and talk a little bit about the site and areas that they would appreciate some feedback on as they go forward with this process. And as far as what I've prepared for you is a staff report that is intended to provide a little bit of context in terms of just the physical context of the site, and also basically some of the existing land use regulations that are in place for this particular site. Give a brief description of the proposed project, but that's, I'm leaving really to the applicant to talk about. And then I've outlined a few areas that the commission may want to focus on in terms of providing some preliminary or some feedback to the applicant on. And really more than, I think, more than some other projects that the commission has seen in the recent past, there are some real, I think, fundamental issues that the applicant is grappling with in terms of the site and that they would appreciate some feedback on, especially consideration of density or FAR and the actual use that is being proposed here for this, for this site. Obviously, this is also an opportunity to comment and provide feedback on any, anything else that is presented tonight and that the commission may feel is important going forward for the applicant to understand. So just briefly, I wanted to provide a little bit of context for the site. It is somewhat of a, well, it's a, it's a unique site, as all sites are, but perhaps more so than some others in that it is at the sort of northern end or northern tip of Cordera Madera. This is actually looking south at the site. I'm going to try to use this. And the property itself includes not only the developed portion of the property, which includes the surface parking lot and about an 8,500 square foot office building, but also includes this lagoon, which is on the site and serves as a significant drainage and flood control, a part of the town's flood control system for the area. In addition, this site is bounded on its north. This is Lucky Drive here, Nellin, which is, serves as a frontage road for some other properties that you may be more familiar with. Obviously, Big Five is here, but is across the street from residential properties, single family residential properties, that is actually in the County of Marin jurisdiction. And this is actually the northernmost property in Cordera Madera, the Lane Pennell Realtor Building. And it's, you know, it's, when you look at the site, it's actually, it's sort of hidden in some ways by some of the vegetation that surrounds the site, which, you know, this is, this is actually a property very close to the highway, very close to the off-ramp at Lucky, the Lucky Dotty Drive off-ramp from 101, but yet it's really not one that I think a lot of people sort of stands out in terms of their visual memory of the area. It's for a commercial property in this area. Others are very visible, signage and other things. This, this property is somewhat hidden behind a lot of the natural vegetation, which surrounds the Black Kettle Lagoon or Lagoon A, called, goes by different, different names at times. This is actually looking from Lucky and Nellin, which is the, the site where the property actually faces north and has street frontage in this location. And currently is, serves as the corporate offices for Barcelino, and the applicant can discuss more about that. I think the property was rehabilitated significantly in about 1991. It was formerly before that, I think, a restaurant use, but went through a substantial remodel in about 1991. Just some other photos as you down Lucky Drive, heading further west. Some aspects of the property which are a little unique are some of this, where the surface asphalt ends and sort of becomes this deck, decked area that is actually over some of the vegetation below it in this area. And here you can see some of the, the town's infrastructure, flood control infrastructure, and some pump stations, and this is a little bridge over the, where the drainage comes out to Cordera Madera Creek. And here's that decking that we were looking at before, which is on some wooden piles. And this just shows, you can, you know, from the highway and you actually, when, this is on the, the southbound off-ramp, so you actually would never, unless you're looking behind you, actually wouldn't look from this particular angle at the property, but still you can see from the highway, it's, it's, the roof line is pretty visible in this ridge line, but not much more than that from, from the highway currently. From the land use perspective, the site is in a general plan land use designation. I don't have that map with me, but it's the mixed-use commercial land use designation, which I think we're, commission members are fairly familiar with. This is the commercial land use designation in the general plan that covers the vast majority of commercial properties adjacent to Highway 101, and is, was also the land use designation that prompted sort of the rezoning of Tamal Vista Boulevard from a purely commercial district to a mixed-use district. The zoning designation currently is the, the property is located right here in the town, so it's this, in the brown color, which we've also seen in terms of several other properties that have been developed in this. This is a C3 zoning district. Sorry, where's my cursor again? The C3 highway commercial zoning district is, only allows for commercial uses. It's the commercial uses that generally are automobile-oriented uses, and permits a wide variety of general retail, gas stations, other sort of automobile uses. I think car washes are permitted and a variety of other things that are, but, but I think importantly does not allow currently residential uses on, in the C3 zoning district. Most recently, we talked about the C3 zoning district in the context of Amy's drive-through, which was located in this little sliver of property just east of the Tamal Pius Drive at Highway 101 interchange. Furthermore, the C3 zoning district was also located on Tamal Vista Boulevard, and that entire area was rezoned from C3 to MX1, as you are well aware. So with that, the applicant is, just a basic summary slide of what is being proposed. Again, very conceptual at this point in terms of the architectural aspects of this project, but really important, what, what the applicant intends to do is bring a new memory care facility to the site, and they, they can explain further exactly what that is. But that includes 24-hour assisted living facilities essentially for, for folks that have impaired memory, and includes things such as a kitchen and a lounge, other amenities, administrative staff offices, outdoor patios. You know, it's, it's not too dissimilar in, as I think about it, to the Aegis facility, although Aegis does have a different, only a very, a small portion of their facility is dedicated to memory care, so it's, it serves a wider group of population. And just base, the other things, just to note that the floor area that is being proposed here would exceed the residential maximum floor area that is currently permitted under the town's general plan, as proposed, which currently in the mixed-use commercial land use designation, it's a maximum of .40 FAR is allowed, and this is proposing approximately .48. And the .40 is really for a mixed-use project as well. Height here, though, would be less than 35 feet, which is what is the maximum allowed in, in the C3 zoning district. Parking, as you see here, is sort of taken from our parking regulations related to what is termed a senior facility or actually more like a rest home. We don't have an exact definition of, or use such as a memory care facility in our zoning ordinance at this point. The closest facsimile would be the, the rest home in terms of the parking regulations. And those are sort of the, the basic parameters with which to work, and again, I'll let the applicant speak more to that. And with that, I've, I've included the, in the discussion section of the staff report, some considerations for the, the commission that I think would be most helpful to the applicant at this early stage in understanding some feedback. In particular, just, just a discussion of the use. It is a, it is a residential use, again, not allowed currently in the C3 zoning district, although it would be generally consistent with the general plan, mixed-use designation. And so in order, though, to make the residential use permitted, or this use allowed at this site, a zoning amendment would need to occur, and it could take one of two forms. I've outlined two different ways that could be structured. One would be more, more like taking what we saw in terms of the Amy's model, which would be to modify the existing C3 zoning district and focus specifically on a memory care facility use as its own unique use in terms of making it a permitted or conditionally permitted use. And then that would then be allowed in other C3 zoning districts, provided that particular findings or conditions were met as written, you know, into the ordinance. Alternatively, a zoning ordinance amendment could be proposed to really rezone either this, create a new zoning district. Maybe you call it, think of it as Mixed Use Two or MX Two, something that, to that effect, which would rezone not only this site, but potentially other sites, or it could just be a standalone district that's created and then applied on a case-by-case or site-by-site basis. That would be more similar to what was done for the Tamal Vista Boulevard corridor, which, as you know, is an involved process. It would involve creating a comprehensive, comprehensive regulations related to use and development standards, and, and frankly, would just be a more involved, intensive process than the other one. But it's definitely would be consistent with sort of the, how the general plan conceived of allowing residential uses in, in, in the mixed-use commercial land use designation. Secondly, also really important here is a discussion about density and FAR. One of the unique things here is that the, almost the entire portion of the site is really below 6.2 feet NAVD, 88, the elevation of it, 6.2 feet NAVD. So our current zoning definitions basically wipes away and says you can't count any land that is below 6.2 feet toward your calculation of allowable floor area. So essentially, we're looking at a site that, at its current elevation and as it's currently, as currently developed, isn't permitted to be redeveloped to any substantial floor area at all, because all of the site, essentially that denominator in your calculation of floor area becomes close to, close to nothing, in which case you have close to nothing in terms of what you could be, what could be developed. You know, so there, there's a basic question about developing anything here and how you actually develop anything here, if and when somebody wants to do that. And obviously, we have a proposal here with somebody who wants to develop something. So that needs to be dealt with in some manner if, if development is to occur on the site at all, and potentially could be done in a number of ways. I'm not spelling out exactly how it's done. Theoretically, a variance could be applied. Generally, staff doesn't look at variances for FAR favorably, but in this particular case, given there's limited, if any, development potential at all, otherwise, I think it's a reasonable consideration. That said, it is also something that might be dealt with in other ways. However, even if you consider this to be a normally, a normal developed, you know, the entire site was above 6.2 NAVD and the entire area was able to be used for that floor area calculation, the applicant's proposing to go above, as I mentioned before, the .4 FAR maximum that was allowed in the, in the general plan, and it appears that probably a general plan amendment would be, would be needed to achieve that. I think I've listed a couple of other things that might be worth considering as well, just in terms of the basis for having those maximum floor areas, and, and is, there may be a reason to consider this particular, particular use differently. Obviously, the parking demand is much less, the traffic demand is much less, so some of those density impacts that you might otherwise see may be different for this type of use. There are provisions in our multiple dwelling zoning district, our two zoning district, that gives essentially a bonus for senior housing, which would permit, and I, I don't think I've mentioned at this point, 71 rooms that are being proposed, so, but aren't written into any C3 zoning district, of course, because there's no residential zoning residences allowed So some, some things to grapple with there, and then I've also highlighted just the affordable housing provisions in our ordinance as well, that if considered a residential use, which I think we all agree is that this would be a residential use, but also if these are to be considered residential dwelling units, on its face, the, our ordinance, our inclusionary zoning ordinance would appear to apply, which would require a significant, you know, up to 25, well, 25, a minimum of 25% of the units to be affordable. It's not clear that the inclusionary ordinance wasn't really inten, it's, you know, generally thought of and applied to multifamily housing developments. It's a much cleaner, clearer path, but it's worth discussing whether or not it should be applied here. I know there are other conversations in other parts of the county where they're discussing affordability for senior housing developments. Aegis, just so you know, that when that was developed, it wasn't, it wasn't subject to the, our current inclusionary housing ordinances, and I think, as I read it through the approval process, however, of the 118 units there, nine were required to be very low and low, I think five very low and, and four low, although I will say it's, it's, that, that equation is complicated by the fact that most seniors, in terms of their incomes, are qualified under those provisions anyways, or most of the people who live in there, because the incomes are not, there's not a constant income as typically defined in such programs. In any case, and then, of course, there's site plan and design. So I will wrap up there, but I just wanted to give you an outline of some of the things for your consideration, and there may be others that the applicant wants to discuss as well. I'm happy to answer any questions about the staff report. I've included, as attachment one was the write-up from the applicant as part of their preliminary review application, and also a memo of May regarding an environmental consultant and their assessment of, of wetland protection requirements and some of the biological, biological assessment of the site.
Okay, thank you, Adam. I guess that wraps up your introductory comments.
Correct.
And with that said, questions for Adam at this point? Margaret?
I don't have a question. What I want to tell Adam and the, the audience is that I was formerly married to the principal of Wetlands Research Associates and had an ownership interest in that company many years ago. I don't consider it to be a conflict of interest for me to participate here today.
Okay.
The, the question I had was only when I drove by was parking, because for 71 rooms, how many staff would be using those 25 parking spots?
I think it's primarily for staff, and I, I'll let the applicant speak to this a little bit more. None of the residents, I believe, would be car owners or drivers themselves.
But visitors would be?
Visitors and staff.
So how many, is there a designation for how many, or a study of how many visitors come on a Sunday or something?
I think, I think that's a, that's the type of feedback that I think would be helpful for the applicant and for them to sort of discuss and get into a little bit more.
The other question I had is, when I saw the site, there are big storage containers there. What, what are those?
Again, I'm sure the applicant would be happy to try to explain some of the existing conditions there. I think, I think when we get to your portion, if you don't mind, Commissioner Bendel, if you can save those for them, I don't know myself.
All right, then. Charles?
Well, so, one of the interesting topics you brought up was how to address it if we decide to make the zoning amendment. The idea of the MX Two, I'm curious about it. You kind of piqued my interest in, you know, the MX One needed a real definition, and in this area, I feel like there are some other buildings that are also towards the end of life or could, or in, in the transition, and like that area might need to, have you gotten any kind of interest or query or?
Sure.
In seeing other opportunities, and is it an opportunity to kind of rethink that whole area as far as how we at town address it?
Yes, and it's, it's sort of interesting. There's, there's only, there's one, there's two other landowners in that upper triangle portion, and I'll try to, I'll try to, this, this area, which is the C3 district, located here. Once you get south of that, that's the Marin Municipal Water District and across the street as well. And so this area itself, that's currently in the C3, and, and all of this, and including this office building are also in that mixed-use commercial general plan land use designation. So the other major landowner, one of, who is, are a single family, they are currently redeveloping the 200 Nellin property. You know, I have, in the past, I've inquired, and sort of, there is a plan, a larger plan, I think, as sort of was, was sort of discussed very cursory when we talked about 200 Nellin, but there was, there was a, they do have a plan in mind of how to redevelop the Big Five and the, and the Fitness, and it, you know, I inquired about what those plans entailed. You know, I don't want to say it's definitive or anything like that, but at this point, all of their plans revolve around commercial redevelopment. It's not an idea, they don't, I have no ideas to, and we, we talked about this a little bit when they did the 200 Nellin project, about the mixed-use district then as well, but there was not an interest on their, on their behalf at that time to actually turn that into, or see that happen. So that's, that's all of the properties, with the exception of the Joanne's Fabric site. And that one, I do not have information about any plans there. Clearly, you know, there's, there may be opportunities. I, I think the biggest opportunity would be with that one single property owner, given that they could consolidate some properties and create a more substantial residential project if that was desired, and that's really what the mixed-use commercial, I think, would facilitate. But at this point, that's, my understanding is that's not the direction they're going. So it wasn't something that felt needed to get addressed right at the, either in the last couple of years or even currently as we're speaking here, but it's, it's possible. Thank you.
Okay, Charles. Phyllis, questions for?
Yes. About the zoning. Since you brought up Aegis, I'm curious as to what zoning Aegis is in.
So Aegis is down here. Sorry, I'll look on the screen. I'm sorry if you can't, for those who are on the other, looking at this screen, it's this property, it's right here. That's in the C1 zoning district. And I haven't looked entirely into the approval history of that property when that was done, but my assumption is that they, there was, as there was in the C3 zoning district up until a couple of years ago, the opportunity to do residential uses in the C1 with a conditional use permit. So as we, the, about two and a half years ago, maybe it was three years ago, could have been two to three years ago, the, that was also previously, was that the time we were doing the Tamal Vista corridor? There was the ability to do residential uses in the C3 district, but that was removed at that time. Still remains in the C1 district, so it is, anyways, that's a long way of saying. It's a C1 zoning district, which is a local commercial zoning district.
Okay. I have some more questions about zoning, but just before I leave Aegis aside, as an aside, besides- as an aside, besides those lower-rated rooms, the more affordable rooms, there's an entry fee, I think it's six thousand dollars, and they have waived the entry fee for a number of their units where people are just paying their month-to-month, whatever it may be.
I've heard some differing accounts on that, to be honest, so.
Well, some woman got up at a council meeting and he's nodding, head of a down gym. He remembers, she went on and on and on about her mother had the fee waived, but she didn't like how much her mother had to pay a month. Anyway, I am questioning, calling, it's not really residential in the sense, unless we define residential as being a place where you sleep overnight. It's a hotel. We have hotels that have long stay rooms in it. People are not just staying for the weekend or a week, they could be staying for four or five months. And they are not in, they're commercial. Why would we not say that this is a commercial-type use? This is a business that is providing much-needed, I don't want to use the word housing, but the care that's needed in a place to do it. And I'm wondering if we are making things fall more difficult for ourselves and for applicants by discussing this as being residential. We need to really define what is residential.
I, I think that's a very, very much a fair point. I think it's, it's, and maybe some of the architect can speak to this, but I think that's how it's been defined, and it may be rooted in sort of the building code requirements for the use. But I, but I hear you. It is, and this is why I think some of what the staff report highlights is, it is a very unique, specific use that maybe isn't quite, you know, is, is different than a residential, typical residential use. It's not quite, you know, I don't know if we can call it a commercial use. It's not a commercial use either, so, but, but it's, you know, for those reasons, I think typically it is considered a residential use. But I think, you know, maybe the applicants can speak to other projects and how that's been treated in, in, in other cases.
I feel the hotel on Tamil Vista, which has the long term.
That's right, and it raises the question. I know, yeah, it raises the question of, it's quasi-residential.
Yeah, it's not really residential in the normal sense. And that's why I ask how Aegis was zoned, because I think it's something we have to look at. We're going to see more and more of this as we age. This is one of the oldest counties in the state, and we're going to see, maybe not memory care, but things like Aegis and, and Aegis still has a lot of people who are not in their dotage per se, but have moved out of their homes and don't want to cook anymore and don't want to clean and don't want. So you've got such a mixture of what you have now, you know, just in Corto Madera, what you're going to see in the future, and I think it is our future, whether we want to face it or not.
Any holes, Phyllis?
No, as I say, it was the zoning that.
Right, okay. Bumped that out, yeah.
Got my mind.
Adam, a couple of questions for you before I ask the applicant to jump up there. This is across the street from Larkspur. Are they aware of this, or is there any discussion?
It's actually the county.
County, okay.
But this was, it was noticed, the notice was mailed to everybody within three hundred feet and posted on our website as well. I, I would imagine, I believe, we would have some in the audience today who are from those areas, so yes.
So then, in terms of definition of the property, residence versus commercial, however that might be, does this fall into RENA count in any way, depending whether it's residential or commercial or any of that, or not at all?
Haven't gotten that far.
Haven't gotten that far, so.
It, dwelling units is ultimately what the, you know, I think you, there would be a very good argument that it should, but you know, until you get a, some definitive answer, it's not.
It's not a per diem rental, it's a long-term care facility in that way, I, I would think, right? And the gray spot on the zoning map.
Yes.
Up there, where Nellen runs in there, what is that spot right there?
It's an office building.
It is, okay.
And it's office zoning, actually, it's just, that's a different zoning district.
Right, okay. And as I've gathered, there has been really no involvement in public works regarding the health status or any other part of that Black Lagoon.
Health, you mean in terms of?
The body of water has a healthy.
Oh, in terms of biological assessment? No, I mean, it's, it's drainage, and, and there is a description. I included the description of what it is on page two and ran that by, I mean, so they've, you know, they're, it, it, they look at it more from a flood control standpoint and the purpose it serves there.
And we'll ask the applicant then if this is a property that's being developed by the owner, or is it a property that's an option or a development right? So we'll ask that question of you guys. So you're going to make a presentation? So please step up the microphone and identify yourself and, right here. I have to make sure it's on when you step up.
This here?
This one right here.
Right, at the podium.
Hello, my name is Sharon Sharie. I have been a resident of Marin County since mid-sixties. I came here from Iran, I'm an Iranian-American, and our family has lived here since, actually, nineteen sixty-seven. And my two kids were born at the Marine General. So I've always been a resident of Marin County, and I'm a merchant, and my business is fashion business. So in nineteen ninety-one, we decided to move our offices from San Francisco to Marin, where most of us live. And we looked at this property at one-one-one Lucky Drive, and it was, had been closed for about four, five months, and the last use was a Chinese restaurant. But the property actually was built by Steak and Ale as a franchise in, I believe, mid-sixties. So as we looked, we found less, and we came back to this property after six months that we had seen it before, and we purchased it. And we did substantial remodeling of the interior. We didn't touch the exterior, but substantial remodeling of the interior. And we made offices for our company, Barcelino, and also warehousing. And so there came a time that we really felt that we need to do something about the property because we were under-using it. And, you know, the, I think that a few years ago, actually, the city of Larkspur made a bid for the property. We got into agreement, purchase and sale agreement, and we actually entertained their use, which was going to be used either as a, what they call a corporate yard, which their equipment would be there, with their, some of their repair facilities, et cetera. Eventually, also, there was a discussion that maybe the, the police department would move there and use the property because it's very close to the freeway. But that deal fell through with the financial crisis of the, you know, last decade. And ever since, we have been thinking about what to do as far as redeveloping the property. For a while, we had the property listed for leasing, and we got all kinds of interests, including motorcycle showroom, kindergarten. But most of the use that people were interested in that property was really medical use. Actually UCSF, Marine General, and several other medical uses came forth. And so we planned to do a study of what would be the best use of the property. Obviously, the first thought that we had was residential, you know, either condominiums, which our study showed that we could put twenty-two condominiums there, or eleven townhouses. But there was a lot of political commotion at that time because of the big, large condominiums that they've built in, in that area. So we worked on studying to develop the property as an office medical building. And the constraint that we had was a hundred-ten parking spaces that we had to allocate to this property. And that, although it was doable, but it was very tight. And then, you know, we did further studies, and I realized that the building is now more than fifty years old, pretty much has done the useful life, and it needs to be really tore down and something else to, to be developed there. So as we studied more and more, we realized that Marin County is considered one of the oldest average-aged counties in the Bay Area. Currently, Marin County has senior population of sixty-five plus, of nearly seventeen percent of the entire population. So it's a, you know, it's an older community. Whereas most of other counties have about eleven to fourteen percent in this age group. One in four Marin residents, sixty-four thousand people, are sixty or older. The senior segment of the population is expected to grow over sixty-five percent in the next decade, in the next ten years. You know, obviously, seniors would like to stay here because of the weather, because of the lifestyle, and they like to be near their families. While we were studying this, I realized that Alzheimer and dementia are a rapidly growing concern for elders in our community, as well as the country, actually. When, in the past, Alzheimer's or dementia would affect people over seventy years old, now it's really affecting some people that are in their fifties. So the need is there. And for a population of nearly two hundred fifty thousand people in Marin County, we have very, very, very few memory care facilities. Our research shows only a hundred twenty-three rooms for two hundred fifty thousand population, which is substantially underserved. Basically, what is happening for the people who are in need? There is a cottage industry, let's call it, that, let's say, people that have had families, four-bedroom, five-bedroom, and their kids had moved up. And usually, the husband and wife taking two, three, four people as they can accommodate. And that's how this need is being taken care of mostly. But there is Harmony House in Sandrafield with twenty-one rooms. Sunrise, again, in Sandrafield with twenty-five rooms. Aegis, right here in Corto Madera, with twenty rooms allocated to memory care. Windchime is the largest, about fifty rooms, that's in Greenberry. And Atria, which is in Novato, seventeen rooms. So really, we're talking about, about a hundred twenty rooms to take care of this need. The consideration that we had over the three years of study is that what would have the minimum impact on the, on the community, on the neighborhood? And really, we found out that with the traffic study that we had done, parking study that we had done, that basically, a memory care facility would have the minimal impact. The residents don't drive, they're not allowed to drive. And a facility like this, as we have talked to operators, you know, obviously, I cannot operate it, this is a specialized field, so you need professionals. Basically, they think that there would be a three-shift for their personnel, and they would have a maximum of ten people. But because the bus stop is right nearby, a few steps away, you know, they will mostly take buses. I'm talking about the personnel, but with twenty to twenty-five parking spaces that we are allocating for this property, it should be sufficient for the visitors. Office medical building would have a lot of turnover, of patients coming in, visiting, leaving, et cetera. Even that, when we had the study done, it really didn't have any traffic impact on the area. Our idea is to create a attractive building, although there has been discussion whether this is considered a residential. We think there's a residential-type structure, but really, it's more of a medium-term living, like some of the hotels that are here for one month, two months, three months. Our study shows that the average resident of a memory care facility will be there for about three years. So the final five percent of a person's life with this type of disease is spent in this kind of a facility. We intend to use landscaping that will help the area, because right now, we are very near the high school, and a lot of kids that just come and go through our parking a lot right now. And so we intend to do a pathway that would be good for walking and bicycling on the lagoon side to move the pedestrian traffic, you know, away from the parking and the street, but through there. And we feel that it's a good project for this property and for the neighborhood, and hopefully, we will have some of our elders to have better facility to live in. Thank you.
That's your presentation, then, for what you want to talk about for the facility?
Well, that's my presentation. I'd like to introduce our architect, Steve Connolly, and he will go through the specifics of the property.
Great.
My name is Steve Connolly, I'm a partner with Oculus Architects in San Francisco. We've been in business about twenty-one years. We generally work in the institutional sector. Our clients include the University of San Francisco, UCSF, I was the former campus architect twenty-five years ago. And we work with Sutter Health Group, California Pacific Health Group, UCSF, UCSF Medical Center, and a lot of universities, Archdiocese of San Francisco. We've renovated over the years many convents within the aging kind of sisters and Catholic orders, and turned them into memory loss facilities and assisted living facilities. This is kind of a, quite a unique site, and to use an awful pun, it's a bit of a backwater. And I'm not quite sure, Adam, which one this is, if I can, there you go. This is really the slides that were talked about really earlier on. We have been involved for about two and a half years with the property owner, and we tested a few concepts, and Adam's staff have been very useful in trying to give us some guidance. Some of the questions earlier raised about parking, those are fairly well-defined in your current code. A facility like this requires, currently requires, for every bed, every three beds, I believe, it's one parking space, that becomes one of the design parameters for us as architects. As previously mentioned, some of the other occupancy's would have a far higher traffic impact. But over that two-year period, we did, the owner did retain WRA to look at this kind of somewhat unique site. When you, it's a kind of a strange site, because on the south side, it has an overflow lagoon, which I'm not quite sure, I've never seen, maybe you can tell me, has it ever been full, the lagoon? been full, the lagoon? It actually, what... If the lagoon is ever flown? Right, on that street, and I believe the Public Works people have an over, it actually slows any flood, so, down to a sufficient capacity before it goes back into the bay. I think the Public Works Department, they have pumps there. So, really, it's, it's never really meant to be full. It's basically just a, an area that actually slows the water. It's a retention area. Now, if the pumps aren't working, and...
So, I will ask that, excuse me, we have to keep the dialogue between us, and later on, you can enter into that. Yes, he's, he did it, and he needs to...
Sorry, sorry for that. But, actually, just looking at this particular photograph, it's a little bit disingenuous, because it really is not full of water. It's a, I suppose in Scotland, we would call it a shock. It's about ten feet below grid, and it's not full of water. And I've never seen it full of water. It's basically an emergency relief vehicle for water coming from the freeway, slows down and to the left-hand side, I don't know if you've got a pointer, Adam? Maybe you could? Up to the top-left-hand side, it flows through a sewage, and there's a pump station there, which releases the water back into the bay. It's to slow any water. And because it's fairly kind of empty most of the time, there's obviously a natural kind of habitat and biologicals there. This particular biological plan was developed by WRA, where they defined, really, the two hatched areas are defining, really, you don't want to go there, and the area on the immediate side of the existing purple building, which is the existing purple building, that's acting as a kind of a buffer. Some of that hatched area is actually under the deck on the left side. So, there was an extensive report done on this by the biological folks. And, the other thing, of course, is, in most of South Marin, and by the way, I'm a thirty-year resident of Marin, I lived here for thirty years, in Mill Valley, and as you probably know, most of South Marin is in a flood zone, a FEMA-dedicated flood zone, just like Mill Valley. And, a lot of kind of, this building, you can see how it is usually addressed. Everything has to go up, but this building was up four foot six, with extensive accessible ramping, obviously, as a consequence. Our new facility would basically sit a little bit higher, possibly even than this, to get above the FEMA requirement for residential. You cannot put residential in that zone. You can't put commercial, they don't mind if things flood, but you can't put residential below the floodplain. So, basically, this was a little bit of the traffic report, and it, this was talking about, we looked at a medical office facilities, which was a great demand from UCSF and from Marin General, but that has a very, very large traffic load because of the in and out, and in and out, and it was about a hundred-and-ten. And, we did look at some housing initially of a year or so ago, and it became a little bit apparent that it is a kind of a quiet cul-de-sac, and it's got a heavily kind of buffered landscape area to the southern exposure. And it's quite pleasant on the southern exposure type of thing, with many mature trees on the property line. Just to give you an idea what these lines mean, you can probably see the shaded area to the left side, that's roughly where the existing building is at the minute. Thank you, Adam, that's very kind of you. And, having done residential care facilities before, there's a few things, a kind of social things that we want to kind of happen. We want people to meet. We want people to interject, and the way we do that is with the kind of, basically, the circulation pathway. So, for example, on this particular concept, and this is only a concept, it's really a test-to-fit kind of layout, just to see how things in an adjacency layout. And we'd really, we're talking about a large, central kind of public space, with some ancillary spaces to the side, but as you move to the left and to the right, so winged building, at the corners, there are other lounges, other crossover opportunities for conversation and meetings. Also, at the corners are staff facilities to oversight. So, really, we have a two-winged building with a central, large public space, gathering space, and on the second floor, we have a similar space on the circulation corridor that looks down into that public space. And at the corners, we really have informal lounges, as you turn the circulation. The other element to it, in, obviously, in residential, we need a lot of window wall. We need a lot of wall to put windows in, to give aspect and allow light penetration. And most other uses, like laundries, storage, they don't need window wall. So, we have a small, partial sub-basement to the north wing. When I say partial, because we're up about five feet above flood zone, that would only be down about four feet, you know, four to six feet, maybe, and it would allow for high-level windows. In that zone is some elevator servicing, some staff rooms, laundry facilities, and dry storage kitchens, and ancillary services, occupancy's. So, we have this south-facing elevation. The other thing we're keen to do is get as many of the rooms facing the south, so there's none facing the hard inner urban line, which is where the car park is at the minute. And, to have breakout spaces, so we have external kind of opportunities at the corners with some seating and decking, so it, it is a nice aspect on the southeast side. Just to reinforce, that red line that you can possibly see, that's really the line that was divined by the biological people, not to go anywhere near that. So, we're really taking a brownfield existing site that is previously developed. We're not moving in to the, to the lagoon, we're not moving, the lagoon doesn't look like that either, it's a little bit of graphical advertising, but we're not moving really off this platform, this previously-developed hardscape. That's really it. These, really, because of its uniqueness, we believe this is the only private lagoon in Corte Madera. And, coming back to some of the statistics, for interest, and actually, Marin County has actually got the oldest demographic in the state of California now. So, this, you've probably seen a lot of age-restricted housing developments coming into play recently, and that's probably the type of market that, you know, will be a lot more often in the future. Really, to the right here, we have just some preliminary massing models. We don't really know the palette, but, you know, really, with a courtyard building, it's an enclosing kind of structure with shelters. But, really, these are just kind of images of what it could be like. There is a desire to make it a contemporary kind of facility. And, really, we're seeking a little bit of guidance on some of the principles, basically, of the use and the parking. And there are, there are definitely challenges with your planning code. It did come up earlier on, a little bit about how it's defined. The building code clearly defines what transient housing is, what residential care facilities are, it's well-defined. Unfortunately, it hasn't made it into a lot of the planning codes. The Federal Fair Housing Act defines what has to be defined as transit housing. Transit housing is a hotel, and then there's dwelling units for permanent living, there's many legal definitions defined in the state building code. Residential care facilities are defined, and assisted living facilities are defined, but memory care facilities aren't well-defined. This is an unlicensed facility, whereas a residential care facility is licensed by the state. And, obviously, they have the full medical facilities. So, there is a little bit of ambiguity and guidance really needed on aspects of that. That's where the aspect of providing low-income percentages gets a little bit woolly, because that comes under the Federal Fair Housing Act, where developers are asked to provide a percentage. So, it's, it's, there's a little bit of study to be done there, possibly. And I'm not quite sure if Aegis does provide low-income facilities, I don't know if they're legally required to, maybe there's a voluntary, but maybe you could, it's a voluntary thing, possibly, yeah.
It was a voluntary, voluntary, well, it was done, there was no requirement, but they voluntarily offered to do that at the time of approvals.
Right, right. So, really, this is really more of a planning thing. We need to define exactly what the animal is, in some respects, or, or help you guys with the owner, kind of, maybe, you know, define or help assist you in some way. This is not unusual, kind of, a lot of kind of cities and planning commissions, you know, it's evolving, life's evolving, occupancy's evolving, lifestyles are evolving, and this may have just slipped through the, you know, the net at the minute. So, really, this is just an informal discussion to try and give us some guidance, and the next steps, direction, and potentially, a full application submitted, where we would obviously, design the building fully. We would like to articulate it a little bit better than that little test-to-fit plan, stepping in and out, creating kind of, sculpting the building a little bit better, but, and also, kind of, as far as the massing, it's, you know, we'd still be under thirty, thirty-five feet, which I believe is the current massing. Selection materials would be discussed and presented at that meeting, or options. The neighborhood outreach, and the application, environmental review. We believe environmental review, I'm not sure if it would be a negative declaration, but that would be for the future. So, any questions? Can I help you with?
Thank you, that was well-stated, and I appreciate the forward-looking nature of the presentation and these points for us to remember, what you're looking for, as well as Adam's staff report on this, on these points, that we have to give you feedback on. So, with that said, Phyllis, do you have any questions for either the architect or the owner?
I'm not sure which one of the two would give the right answer, or, Adam, you may have the answer. Why would a memory care facility be different from an assisted living? I mean, there are people who are in assisted living for physical problems, there are all sorts of different reasons why people need assisted living. Why would this not fall under assisted living and the rules, regulations, and licensing is what got me concerned?
Indeed. Assistant living is for ambulatory, sorry, non-ambulatory individuals, it's well-defined. They need medical facilities on kind of staff, basically, all the time. They're licensed under the state health department. Memory care facilities are able-bodied people, who really just have a memory loss, kind of, so they can basically, you know, physically look after themselves, but it is specific to their memory loss, where the challenges are. So, it's, it's a slightly different type of facility than assisted living. Assistant living facility, sorry, memory loss facilities, usually the challenges there are people wandering off, not knowing where they are. That's usually addressed with identification bracelets and sensors and the kind of unintrusive kind of methods like that. And some of the facilities we've done with old convents were an elderly sisterhood, that happens a lot, so we really need to know where everybody is. But, they are able-bodied individuals, it's associated with their memory, and getting confused and getting disorientated.
To follow up on what you talked about, the wandering off, a great aunt of mine was put in a facility about twenty-five years ago, and in her nightgown, bathrobe, but wearing her hat, she climbed out the window, with her roommate watching her do this, went down Fourth Street, all the way to the bus stop, got on the bus, and took the bus back to North Beach in San Francisco, where her apartment had been. People saw this woman going down the street in a bathrobe, wearing a hat, and I guess nobody notices these things. What do you do to, I mean, I don't want to see people fenced in or caged, but what do you do to protect people from wandering off? You've got the lagoon out there, you've got, you know, you've got the freeway nearby. How do you protect?
Usually, it's done with a kind of, a kind of a non-invasive method, they wear bracelets, basically, sensory bracelets, that they know where everybody is at any one time. And, there's usually sensors, you know, it's done in a very kind of subtle way. Having not fully designed, your specialists come in and do that, it's part of the management process. This is why they're not allowed cars, obviously, because that gives them away to wander off. But, that's why you have a staff, the staff oversight, and the way the plans generally work, on the circulation route of the building, there are oversight opportunities for staff stations to look into the dining areas or the lounges. All the doors kind of can only be opened with electronic keycard entry systems, and we wouldn't propose putting fences up in any way, it's usually a kind of a fairly subtle way.
Yeah, well, I agree, I don't want to see it fenced in, but I want to be sure that people are safe.
It's really a management and operational kind of thing on the operator's side, and it's, it's evolving and evolving with modern technology and phones and things like that.
Thank you.
Okay, that's why we're all gonna have chips. Charles?
Okay. So, thanks for coming and having this informal meeting with us. You are asking for more than what's currently allowed, okay? So, I want to understand programming requirements when it comes to a facility that not very many of us are familiar on, how it should lay out, and ultimately, what drove you to come proposing seventy-one rooms and, you know, basically, really doing a much larger FAR, and if we think it's a great facility and would love to see it built, but ultimately can't make the finding about giving it, like, can, can that be done? So, so, did you study trying to meet within the code, and ultimately, where does the program break down in the facility that would make it, you know? I mean, anyone can ask for more space, right? Like, we set limits even on skyscrapers when office demand is through the roof, right?
Yeah, no, indeed, the way a lot of kind of residential care facilities work is it's proportional to the amount of residents, the staffing, and there's basically a sweet point, in terms of a business plan, a cost-effective, you know, cost-benefit ratio. I can't remember for, it's so many staff for a residential care facility. Again, it comes from the management and the operators. So, really, that drives the number count a little bit, how many staff can they serve, and you don't want to get caught between...
So, is there, is there national, you know, institutes that basically put up those?
Well, actually, the state of California, state of California Health Department has those ratios, you need so many staff for this amount of patients. Memory care is a little bit different, because it's not as, you don't need as many staff, because they're ambulatory, they're not disabled in any way, shape, or form, so...
Right, so that ambiguity makes it harder for us to...
It is, it is, indeed.
Could you please step up to the microphone, yeah, and if that would be great?
We have interviewed some professional organizations that would be running such a facility, and Marin County is very expensive in many, many ways. So, really, the ones that we are attracted to, the ones that are respectable, you know, high-standing in this industry, they all are looking somewhere around, let's say, sixty to one-hundred rooms for Marin County, to just even think about it. But, really, they would like a larger facility, because that reduces their cost of operation. And, you know, then they can think about it from economics point of view, whether this would be a feasible project for them to come enter the Marin County market. So, really, the seventy rooms is almost a minimum requirement for these established organizations. I've heard that from several of them. And so, that's how we've come to this seventy-room facility that we are... And so that's how we've come to this, uh, seventy-room facility that we are before you to see how we can proceed.
Just coming back to the programming, uh, each operator is gonna have a slightly different program. So based on our knowledge of similar facilities we have done, we're basically at the minute trying to make a best guess for the ancillary support facilities. The rooms are fairly straightforward. Uh, and obviously there are occupancy ratios for dining and for well-defined and building codes and architectural standards. So really, this is a kind of a first pass test of fit. Uh, a lot of the programming would be, we believe would be better defined with a particular operator and how they manage the facility would be slightly different.
Um, so, uh, yeah, I think that that was, that was, to, to, I feel like you asked for direction, but I also don't feel like you equipped me enough to, to really give you valuable feedback about how I personally can make findings of, of that degree of an ask above or, you know, to change at this, at this point. But I also don't know how to proceed because you didn't give me enough carrots to basically really talk to it. I, I think that it's a great idea, but, um, I, I, I struggle with, I, I don't feel like I got enough information and there isn't, because it's outside of the normal purview that even the town has addressed in the past, right? It's a different type of use. And it's not on our staff to define that at this point. Like, it would, it would be more helpful, so I feel like it's, it's a little difficult.
No, and I, and I...
Go ahead, please.
Well, I was just gonna say, I think that is the, even just that, that information that is going to be valuable to the commission in, in thinking further about this is also valuable feedback for the applicant, so I don't...
Yeah, I think that at the end of tonight's, uh, discussion, um, if there are questions that you can pinpoint about that kind of information you'd like to see, then we'd want to put it to these gentlemen to come back to us with that.
Indeed. Uh, I think, you know, there's obviously, there's a lot of information, particularly from the operators, that we could provide. They could maybe give you some insight into the operational characteristics of higher functions and stuff like that.
So, so one of the other things that I had, um, was I, I lived next to a facility like this in San Francisco and, and there was a higher number of ambulance kind of responses just because of the nature of the population. Um, you know, so regular traffic flow, but then also, you know, regulations about how a facility like that, that does have more calls, how, how they address, um, the adjacent pub, you know, residents and that kind of stuff. Like, have you seen, like, you know...
Nobody wants to live beside a hospital when I was...
Well, I mean, we're adjacent to a hospital, but what are, like, are there, does, do you see corridors? Like, what is the access for that? Like, is, are they coming in from the side? Like, is there, you know, like, is it, you come in sirenless or is there, you know? I think that that's an important thing for this...
No, indeed. It would need to be addressed, but it is a different, these are healthy people.
They're, they're of an older age group.
They are of an older, but strangely enough, the, they're actually, the age group threshold is coming down. It's starting now in the early, mid-fifties. So, uh, uh, you know, it's funny, kind of, when I was kind of the campus architect at UCSF, nobody wanted to be beside a hospital because of the emergency room, but they all knew that there was a hospital right beside their house. But we try and restrict that.
Right, but one came before the other and usually the hospital in the city came first. But I guess for me also, that area is not, um, at least from the town perspective, a highly residential use area. And so the kind of Cormodera accessibility standards that we assign to sidewalks and stuff, I personally walked it the other day with my kid in a, in a, um, stroller. And I feel like to support that, I, I would like a discussion about what it means for the overall community. Either the community has to adopt and take on the responsibility to facilitate new citizens, new, new residents, right? Or will the facility also take some ownership of improving the surrounding area for accessibility, given that? That's another thing that I would really like to know.
Yeah, that's, that's quite normal in San Francisco. You really have to fix a sidewalk even though it's not yours. Uh, so most kind of, uh, there's usually a planning gain of some sort when, when any facility goes in. We recently, we do a lot of work for, uh, St. Mary's College in Maraga. Um, the college bought the police department a police car. That was what they wanted, everything. So there's always something that a city needs, but obviously something like redoing the sidewalks to be ADA compliant. That's a fairly extensive program in San Francisco. Don't know how extensive it is in Cormodera.
We have a well-defined program now and are implementing it, so, you know, inclusion of that would be good.
So, yeah, the property improvement would have to include that type of accessibility.
Right, but i- if you have seventy-one, so the other thing is, is just, you know, they're not driving cars, they're not wandering off because they're chipped, but how much are they gonna interact with the community on foot? So are, are the...
They don't.
They don't. They're full, they're just, so they are, they remain in the facility?
Yes.
Okay, so I can't, to me, I can't believe that that's not licensed and that's not... The only time I had ever experienced this type of facility was my grandparents stayed at a large retirement community for military officers in Southern California and they had different levels of care. And that one was the most stringent because those people, even though they didn't need to have a nurse care, they, they basically had to really cordon them off because they weren't able to just interact and so, um, but it was part of a, a, you know, the overall care of, of a, a larger population and it was only a component. So breaking off that component and what that means in the community not surrounded by other people and nurses is, is, is new to me from a personal experience. So I personally would just like to know more.
I, I think that would be a useful education to have maybe an operator or, I mean, an architect, because a lot of the questions you're asking, you know, operational and management questions.
Right, and, and I guess that's what, that's what's hard is because, you know, usually when we have developers that come in, the developer is both the subject matter expert and the property owner on, on this type of, of almost, you know, sometimes public, you know, hospitals and stuff like that, so...
Let me comment on a couple of, uh, issues here. One is that, uh, tonight we've discussed that this kind of operation is not licensed. Actually, the difference between this kind of a facility and assisted living is that the staff here will not be permitted to apply medical, uh, applications. Like, for example, if somebody needs an injection, nobody in the staff can do that. So that's really the difference between assisted living and memory care. As Steve has, uh, mentioned, most of these people are otherwise healthy. They have a memory loss and so therefore they need to be, you know, cared for. One of the operators that we have spoken to, they have experience, uh, with one of their facilities that is actually near a high school. And they welcomed the fact that, uh, Redwood High is just a stone's throw away from this property. And all the neighbors have seen the students that are always passing through, et cetera. So what this operator was mentioning is that perhaps they can work with the school to have interaction, the students, you know, after hours, et cetera, to come and mingle with, uh, some of these residents. So it's, there is a social benefit for, for the area. And, uh, really, the operators are the ones that know how to run this kind of business. One of the things that I have, uh, tried to maintain is, uh, the operators that we, we talk to, they, they have experience. One of them is Silverado that, uh, they are, uh, they are referred to as the Cadillac of the industry. They're from Southern California. The nearest facility that they have here is in Berkeley. And that's a hundred-ten-room, uh, care facility.
So before you go, but let me just get clarification for everybody then, that in terms of a, uh, memory care facility, um, if there are medical needs outside of this capacity of the staff or the facility, and that's a, a, a reoccurring problem, or they degrade in such a way, then that patient no longer fits the definition of a memory care resident and must be...
There may come a time, yes.
Gets moved to a different type of facility. So you're saying that the facility is limited to this, uh, particular type of patient?
Right.
And that prior to this, there may be other conditions and post-residency at your facility, there might be another, they have to move somewhere else.
Sure.
It's just like many, uh, ambulatory facilities that have all these different levels of, uh, use and access. So the problem here is that like, um, a, uh, assisted living, that, you know, looks like a duck, quacks like a duck, this memory care doesn't have a definition that is so strict. But somehow we have to hold the property to this definition of memory care if we're going to do that. You are presenting it as that's what it is and then we'd have to get more information about how to define that. And I think that's part of the responsibility you would provide and the planning department would then come up with those terms.
So, so as part of that, um, for example, uh, do they need to be medically diagnosed as dementia or, I mean, everybody, I start, I'm, you know, in my forties and I start forgetting things. It, like, so is, is it, is there, so what's, what sets the conditions for living there, right?
Really, as I understand it, it's a voluntary situation. You know, it's not that, uh, any person who has dementia feels that they're incapable of, you know, leading a normal life. So it's the family that actually, family or friends, that they actually get to a point that they say, okay, this person can no longer live at home. So that's, that's really the condition, you know? And again, uh, we are hoping to provide the facility, but there are established organizations that this is their business and they deal with this kind of a, you know, the environment every day. And they are the ones that are going to be responsible, uh, for operating this, uh, this facility.
Okay, Charles, what else there?
I, I think that's a, it's a good one for me to understand about what, what the requirement, you know, because for, for me, if it was, um, you know, it's a, a senior facility and you have to be fifty-five or older to live there, but ultimately they don't enforce it and I could move in with my family at thirty, it's important for me to understand that, so...
All right, well, thank you. Margaret?
So I, I have a question first, just about what you said. So i- is it your plan to build the structure and set up the facility and then turn it over to someone else to run?
Yes, of course, yeah. This is not my business, it's not, uh, it's a property development, uh, proposition. And, uh, we would have to make sure that we find somebody that, I mean, some organization that can operate such a, uh, facility and that they're experienced, they have a good track record, you know, the...
So you just are gonna build it and walk away from it? Is that, and sell it? Do you sell it or do you retain ownership?
No, it's my goal to own the property for as long as I live. And, uh, you know, just like any property that anybody develops, you know, the, uh, you need a user that can, uh, appreciate the type of a structure that you're offering and the community and the facility that it is. So really, the, the facilities that I mentioned, they're all older. This will be the brand-new facility for memory care in Marin County. So, uh, yeah, I, I'm not going to be there to run day-to-day business of the facility. And I don't think that anybody would want me to be there to do that.
I have another, um, issue and it, it, I, I really think that, at least from, I've seen, you sort of undervalued the importance of the traffic going on there. I've always believed and thought that that is the worst on-and-off ramp in all of Marin County. I think it's a dangerous on-off right there. It, it comes suddenly, people don't merge correctly. So right, right where you get off at Joanne Fabrics, that's dangerous. Then you have the impact of the Tamil Vista traffic. You have the kids coming from the high school. Um, I, I think that traffic, even if you say that it's not going to be a high-trafficked, uh, facility, I think that right now you're sort of undervaluing the importance of looking at how much this one extra thing will add to an already very impacted area with a very bad on-off ramp. And when I was there, I also noticed that if you go around the corner towards the highway part of it, many people use that highway sort of area there to park, uh, for the bus pad.
Right.
And, um, and so that's all parked up on both sides and the other side of the highway also. I think you really have to look at that. It's concerning to me.
May I, may I explain? That we have done a detailed study of, uh, traffic and parking for, when we were studying to see how it would work for an office medical building. So as you can, uh, realize, in an office medical building, you have constant visitors. Patients come in and they leave, they come in and they leave. And even for, uh, office medical building, there was, uh, no traffic impact. This is by WRA, which is, that's their business and, of course, we need to update that because that was done two years ago for a different project. But for an office medical building, they felt that there was no, uh, impact that, uh, we would have to, uh, mitigate.
May I ask, Adam, uh, a traffic study would be commissioned by the town and not the applicant, or would the applicant be responsible for providing that?
Uh, typically, we've, um, you know, it can work both ways, um, but typically, we've, if we're doing a comprehensive environmental analysis, um, we would, we would do that traffic analysis. Obviously, we need information from the applicant in order to, um, start that process, but...
Okay. Just thought I'd ask. Go ahead, Margaret.
And then just, um, I guess the other concern I have, and I guess it needs further study, is the flooding there has always been very bad. In fact, the worst part of Southern Marin is that lucky drive area. Even as the highway rises, there's, there are puddles that you go through that would cause, um, planing, is that what they, hydroplaning? Um, I, I think that, uh, given the fact that this is already, you know, in, in a flood zone, I think that, um, there's a lot of issues that needed, would need to be considered around that.
Sure. Uh, I think that with the pumps, uh, they have, the pumps have been helping to drain that, uh, flooding from the lagoon. But that's a condition that exists. I mean, the, any kind of a facility, any kind of, whether it's an office building or a medical building or any kind of a facility, uh, would really, you know, be more impactful for the area than this, uh, facility because, again, the residents don't drive. And typically, from what we understand, the family members, at the beginning, when there is a new resident, they visit, but then that drops off. So the traffic impact for a project like this, I think is the absolute minimum impact that, uh, that area can incur.
I think that the impact of just putting a new building there without mitigating for the traffic and the flooding issue, without looking at anything else, would be an issue for me.
Well, I, I'm sure that the commission will address that.
So, yeah, and I would just...
Mr. Wolf, I, I believe that the traffic study is submitted tonight, right? With part of the definition?
I did not include it, it was, I did not include it in this...
Because we have it.
Well, it was a traffic study for a different project. I felt that it...
Right, true, yeah. As I mentioned, it was for a medical office building.
I will, you know, I'll just say, of course, as part of any environmental assessment, hydrology is looked at, um, uh, sea level rise has to be looked at, you know, uh, uh, this is all part of the sequoia review would require sort of a, uh, at least a, uh, very, there may be a variety of different levels of traffic would be looked at, but there may be, um, so those things would be, would be all taken into consideration as part of the assessment of what, what would be considered significant impact. And also clearly, you know, we can get Public Works Department to fully explain, you know, how the flood control system works and, and the pumps and so on and so forth. So if that's something that you'd like staff to follow up with in the future, if this, you know, moves forward, we can certainly do that.
So I think that what I understand, the building level now is at ten-six-five NAV above, uh, and we would want to be at eleven to be, um, out of the floodplain zone. So that, is that your intent to put it at eleven feet if you're at ten-six now?
Uh, I, I really don't, I can't respond to that.
The, uh, the site map shows... The, the site map shows 10.6 for that first floor level, and...
Yeah, the, the, I believe that is from the bottom of the lagoon. So really, we will be above flood zone if we place the building roughly where the existing ground floor is.
Okay, yeah, so with that said, just to address some of Margaret's concern, is that the building would be out of the flood zone, conversed, or relative to many other buildings that are not out of it, of the flood zone. So while the cars might float away in the parking lot, the building itself will be above the flood zone.
So how high does that make the building as compared to...
He's keeping it below the, the, at or below the maximum height of the property that is allowed on the...
The ground level of the property, or the new building level?
Yeah, well, 35 feet.
35 feet's the current massing. If you look at the office building across the street, or, that's sometimes on two or three ways, sometimes they bring Phil in and ramp up slightly, so you get, you lose that kind of effect with all the ramps and ADA ramping. But we would be putting it where the existing building floor line is, which is above floodline. Sort of a combination. The office building does it both ways, your new housing project along here, Tamil Ridge, it partially does it that way as well.
Ramps up, yeah.
Ramps up.
So, I mean, it's all kinds of flood history that can be brought back to bear with the guy who puts the berms out by Corder Madera Creek, and we can't do anything about the highway, they tried to put in 18 lanes there, as you recall, in 2013, and we said no to that, and they were gonna do away with that exit, but we would've had large overpass right there. So, you know, we're stuck with it for the time being, we can't stop the freeway from being a water problem now, that's a different issue. Phyllis, you had some questions?
I was just curious, when you were talking about the operation, how it's gonna run, my understanding when you first spoke about it is that you're gonna own the, build the facility, own the operation, and bring in contractually someone to operate it for you. But then when you were talking, you talked about, it sounded like you were just going to build the building, then lease out the building to a separate company to do the work. And I think it makes a difference in which your responsibility is, and I think, for the sake of the town, we'd like to know who is responsible if things are not working right.
Well, whenever you develop a commercial property, which ultimately this will be, as the owner, you're responsible for the property, for the safety of the property, for compliance with, you know, city ordinances, regulations, et cetera. But within that property, whoever is operating it, they are responsible for the entire operation.
Until your name is in addition to insured in the lawsuit, but, so you're, you're planning on really contracting out the operation?
Yes.
If you go ahead, you are not going to lease out the building?
Right, well, I'm not qualified to operate.
Yeah, I understand.
I don't have the experience, you know, but, yes.
I'm glad you admit that to begin with, and don't find out, I'll find operated.
Okay.
But that was really my question, thank you.
Thank you. Before we run into, get, it's a very patient audience to get up to the microphone here, I would, and some of the things I would like to hear commentary on is the acceptance or ideas of this facility in the town, how people feel about the project as a purpose, the project in that location, the idea of creating enough definition that we can encourage this or not, you know, do we want to create a different zoning for this type of facility, because there are other places that it might occur? I would like to just say that if you, when you come back, or if you come back, that we would want to have a concrete proposal from an operator to understand how it functions, and what their responsibilities are, what the facility looks like as it generates monthly, yearly, et cetera. And that would confirm some of this traffic parking and so forth, if we had more definition from an operator about it. So, I, I think that that will be important, so.
I understand.
And your intent at this per, at this point in time would simply be a lease to an operator then?
Yes.
And, and that, it would have to be a pretty long-term lease, I would think, both for your...
Well, to work...
Yeah.
For us and for the operator, it would be a 10- to 20-year lease.
And I think that's about it for now, so we're going to open it up to public comment, and I thank you for your comments and input, it's very interesting.
Thank you.
So, all right. So, all of you have been very patient, you are, you've been here for a long time. So, if you would then line up as, keep a line behind the microphone, and if you intend to speak, I'm gonna time you at three minutes, and state your name, please. So, let's have at it. Nobody jump up at once here, right?
Hi, I'm Marla Orth. I've, my family's been here continuously since 1958, so I know that piece of property better than most, because I grew up in Madera Gardens. Just by way of background, I have two masters in public health and public health law. I was a federal regulator for nursing homes in the state of California, Nevada, Arizona. I've done a lot of development myself, worked with operators. I'm a big believer in this, the data definitely supports your, your proposition that the need is there for these kinds of facilities. I took care of my own father, who had multi-infarct dementia for 13 years, and I can speak to how difficult that is, and I finally did have to institutionalize him. And he was healthy and happy until he wasn't. And the couple of concerns I have are, is a non-licensed facilities. I have concerns about things like medication management, some of these patients, and I can tell you, because I do clinical research, and, and Alzheimer's, and Parkinson's, and other kinds of dementia, their situation changes very, very quickly. And the current medical model is to give them lots of medications, but it doesn't change the progression of the disease. It barely manages the symptoms, and I'll argue, based on my own research, it doesn't do a very good job of that. So, a couple of the things that just sort of come to my mind as I share your concern is, I really kind of need to understand this model better. I'm much more familiar with a licensed one. I'm also concerned about the flooding, and God forbid, those pumps fail. How do you get these people out of the facility, and who gets them out of the facility? Because when they're taken out of their environment, that's very routinized, and we've seen it in the fires, we've seen it in the floods, we've seen it in a whole lot of other things, they panic. And they're like herding cats on a hot day on a dinner roof. It's, it's crazy, literally, it's crazy. So, I have concerns about that. But I would welcome this in the community, because I think we don't have enough of them. But I'm kind of concerned about the model. I would also like to see some more community input, like maybe use your communal area for daytime care, for, just for respite care, because I know as a caregiver, you know, after four or five hours of hearing the same sentence 15 times, you're just like going out of your mind. So, a place where there could be some congregation for the general community, I think that'd be awesome. So, welcome.
I'm Peter Orth, and we've talked about this quite a bit, and I won't go into my background, but it was somewhat similar, I worked for the federal government, and overseeing the federal dollars, and went through the state to a lot of the care facilities, SNFs, and to the mental hospitals, and I did inspect some of those. So there are a lot of concerns that have to be addressed, and I think it's a great idea that suggested to actually get some operator to assess it and say what they think. To expand a little bit on Marla's thoughts, that basically, in the construction, it would be, that would be the time to think about actually integrating it into the community and being a better asset to the community by providing this daycare concept for people who are in their homes, but being taken care of by their families, which occurs a lot, as Marla suggested. And that, if that was 20, or 30, or whatever it was, and whether it was a shuttle bus that picked them up and took them there, two hours, four hours, around a meal, that would mean a little additional space, it would mean some additional facilities for the, for the, preparing the meals, so it would mean a little additional there, and it would be a different model, it would expand it a little bit. I personally wouldn't mind if it went up a little higher to keep the residents off the bottom floor, and use some of that bottom floor that might be subject to flooding, for a more community-oriented thing along the same lines, the memory care, because you're right, we're really short on, on space for that. An interesting thing, you mentioned the ages, and I, I'm not clear on whether the 5%, you know, for lower-income people that was imposed on them somehow by the town back then, has ever been enforced, or is possible to be enforced in this kind of situation, since it really is a combination of elements, and it certainly is different. And also, it's much more akin to a hotel, or a skilled, or a hospital, really, despite the fact that it's not medical care in terms of the use, and so I think the, the massing and the residents and the number of units certainly would be much more comparable to that, to me. So, I, and I think the fight, one of the findings that you need to make, by the way, I think could be improved quite a bit if it, this had more community aspects to it, and it was tied into the community, and more people used it that way, which is similar to what was suggested about the students coming by, which would be one way to do it, but I think it'd be better if the actual families could use it for their own respite kind of care during the day. I think that'd be great.
Cindy Winter, I live in Luxborough, I guess I'm the Luxborough representative this evening. The Luxborough border is about 300 feet from where the memory care home would be, I'm not sure, I know where the boundary is, but I don't know the measurements. My interest is in these healthy, older people who have some memory impairment. They might like to get out for a walk sometimes, in the care of a staff member, small groups, or perhaps a family member would be appropriate to take them out occasionally to stretch their legs. And I know from long experience, as a cyclist and as a walker, that the intersection at Pfeiffer and Lucky Drive is the intersection from hell. And I'm not blaming anybody in the town, it just grew that way. And the walkers could cross the street to the residential side, and walk toward Redwood Highway, and access the Sander Marker Trail from there, but sometimes there are problems crossing Doherty Drive. So what I would suggest is that the planning director talk with the DPW director, and ask him to put this problem on the agenda of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Corder Madera has a very good BPAC, and the owner and the architect would be welcome to attend, it's a public meeting, and this group of people might have some ideas that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
I'm Julie J. I live directly across the street from Shrum's property. There are four of us here who live on Lucky Drive, and we totally support Shrum and whatever, however, we're going to do some development at his location. But there's several things. I gave up six months of my life last year for my mom, who is in assisted living and part of a memory care facility. I don't know, I don't know, like you guys do medically, but I don't know people who are in memory care who don't need medicine and don't need supervision, so I do agree that maybe some licensing or something like that happens. But one thing we have been trying to do as a community, 20 houses, is create more of a, less of a ragtag feel on Lucky Drive, and we're trying to improve Lucky Drive and, and make it prettier. So, we do want to work with making sure the landscaping is lovely, and the properties move back, and back more towards Big Five and less, and make this more of a residential street, which it really is. There are a ton of bikers, and a ton of runners, and all the high school kids cross there, because as you know, at the end of Lucky Drive is the path across the freeway. So, being a designer, I moved onto the street and started getting everyone together, and we're gonna make this street pretty, so we want to continue that way. But the other thing I want to say is, we do flood. It goes right in my garage, I have pictures of myself on my paddleboard, right in front of Shrum's property, right at all on Long Pinell. It's just for a couple of hours, because it's high tide, but in that couple of hours, if you have a large enough vehicle, you could possibly get through the street, but most people don't, it gets pretty deep where we are, and I don't know how that impacts, we all live there and deal with it, we know when the tides are coming, but I don't know how that would impact people who are in need. So that's the only thing I wanted to say about the flooding. And the, the pumps everybody's talking about, that has nothing to do with our flooding. I mean, that's, that's helping somewhat, but that flooding is not coming from that, what are we calling that, a lagoon or whatever, it's coming...
It's coming over the guy.
Yeah, yes. And Rhoda and Larry have lived there since the 60s, when they've seen the flooding go to the top of what are now the...
The railing of the, of the fence that is right on that property.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't think the flooding so much, the structure, I think it's, if somebody needed to get in or out in that, it is about an hour and a half timeframe, where you can't get in and out, or two hours. So that's all I want to say.
All right, thank you very much. Who else is gonna pop up? All right, please.
Hi, my name is Sharie, and I'm Sharom's brother. I live part of the time in Greenbree, and part of the time in Brussels, which is the European capital, in a sense. And I work for a think tank on global governance, and the EU, European Union, trying to become like a United States of Europe, and dealing with global governance. This is what we define the lowest level of global, I mean, multi-layered governance, where, but it's also the most beautiful, because this is where the people are directly engaged in a town hall like this. So, I was really here for curiosity. I, me and Sharom lost our mother six months ago, and she had a very good life, she lived in San Rafael, but the last three or four years, she had dementia, and we kept her in the house, but it was tough, it was really tough. And I just want to congratulate both you and the community in terms of the interaction, the exchange, the concerns, and my just appeal to you is do something, you know, we really do need that, some kind of memory care facility with the aging of the population, and some of the statistics given, it's really essential and important. I don't know about you guys, I hope you won't be in that situation, but I think 10, 20 years from now, I might need one of those rooms, and you better be a good one, and please, continue the cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else? Well, then, we don't have anybody else stepping up to the microphone. So, last chance, I'm gonna close the public side of this, and bring it back up here for discussion. I think that we're at a place where, what I'd like to hear from the commissioners, and the applicant would like to hear, is, number one, your basic concept support of this idea. Nevertheless, with improvements to the presentation, or the elements that we might ask of them, how do you feel about this as a project going forward? Should they go forward with this project? We can define then, some of the things we want to see, and I think that I would like you also to chime in on the approach to the zoning, or if that's the way you feel about proceeding with it. And then, as I say, a laundry list of a few things. If you feel this is an important concept, then please say so. I think that we know that we've said so far, and the applicant seems to, he hasn't shaken his head negatively about bringing in a proposal from a operator in some way, or at least take it to another level of presentation. And I think that what I'm hearing... And I think that what I'm hearing from public comment and from the commissioners is that let's try to define better the medical definition of this memory care, and what's included in it. If you have other additions to this definition of what goes on there, please state that. And, you know, I think that with my notes, there'll be a few other things to add, but I want to start with a very, as concise of feedback as we can get to. Phyllis.
I certainly support the concept. I would like more information. You mentioned there is an operator over in Berkeley, that you said is quite good. I would love if you could talk to them, and they could come and give us a presentation. I might also want to ask, if you're gonna love this, Adam, if staff, since you're short a staff member, if staff could go over there and take a look, and see what's happening there to get a better idea. This is something that's very important, and I want to see it work, but I want to see it work right, because if we make a mistake, if the applicant makes a mistake through ignorance and not having enough information, they're not gonna be anymore. You know, it's gonna, and I think this is something needed. So that's what I feel. As far as the zoning change, I discussed this with Adam, and the first option would be probably the best one to do. The second option would be for more involved, take a lot more time.
So you're referring specifically to which?
On page four. The specific residential use proposed could be added to the list of permitted or conditionally permitted uses in the C3 district use table. Okay, you see that?
Very good. That's what I wanted, I just wanted to be clear.
Rather than do, I mean, all the studies we did, and they were certainly worth it, but there was a lot more property involved, not one issue, you know, to change the zoning mixed use, you know, the whole Tamil Vista corridor. I don't think that type of studies and work is needed. This is more like, as you said, Amy's.
What I forgot to ask or state is, how do you feel about the density of this at .48, the way it's called out now, or, you know, because we had set the .4 for the MX. So where do you land with the discussion of density for this?
I've always looked at density, and this goes back to my architectural studies, as more of the visual effect that it has, and looking at some of the concepts that the architect has shown for the buildings, I, and I'm assuming you're working on a .48 when you do this, that, to me, I could accept that, because, I mean, we're talking about .8. And I think what's really important is the effect it has on the property, how it fits the property, how it fits the environment that surrounds it, and I think in this case, .48 would work. That doesn't mean I would want to see that in everyone, or I'd want to see it changed to .48 or .50. We had that discussion for a year during the corridor study. So that's where I stand on that. What else did you want to know, Peter?
Well, I think that we've both been around to have enough discussion about the type of architecture, and what that looks like, and that the broken-up building edges and residential feel is important, and I think you would stand for that.
Yeah.
In this architecture design.
It's a very open, it's an open concept, and I think it's inviting. Plus the fact, I mean, going by the current trees and landscape, you're not really gonna see it, you know, not from the freeway, and what you do see should look good.
Okay. We may come back here shortly. All right.
Probably.
Charles.
So I guess, when it comes to the mass, and also, first off, the zoning is, in evaluating it, if there was a synergy with a bigger group of, you know, property owners and uses that would benefit the town, we should go that way, but it doesn't sound like maybe that's there, maybe there's another inquiry, but, so I would say the first one makes the most sense. So that would apply to all the, you know, car, the commercial, right, C3? But at the same time, C3, I don't know, like, it's the, it's, so it's because we want this use, okay? So I don't know that it's the best for C3, and in car use, when there's no cars, but that's, you know, the thing is, is it's, it's like hitting a puppy. I really love the idea, and I think that it is something that's important in the community, but there are, you know, I want to, as a commissioner, and then also just someone in the community that wants to really understand these, and as a public representative, health and safety is almost always the top of the, the list, and so, when I, you know, there's this reference to institutionalized, but then it's not really an institution, and usually when we get those, and, you know, there's, I really need more clear definition about, is it residential or it's commercial? And are we judging it against the houses next door because just, you know, the elderly are living in it, or is it gonna be more like the real estate office next door and be kind of stark, and, you know, the massing is the extrusion of the program, or are we talking about, you know? I need more definition in that, for sure, and, because I didn't see enough of it, I think, and it's general massing, I saw lots of nice natural light for people, and in general, I think it would be a good building start. So, you know, I like that. I always get what the business model is, right, but ultimately, and, and I want to have that type of business in the community, I think it's great, but sometimes the landowner and the property isn't right for it. And, and I'm not saying that, it's just, 70, the size and the capacity, the reason that I'm stating that is because you even mentioned it, right? There was this big blow-up, where we, the town and other commissioners allowed what was thought of as a great thing for the community, we allowed a much larger density, and there was a huge pushback. And it's a really quaint little building, if you look at that footprint, right, I mean, it's half the size. I get that you guys are still staying within the footprint of your developed land, but it's two to two and a half times, just in the, even if it was a single story, the current resident, and then you're going up two floors. So I think that massing is quite substantial, and, you know, it's another one of those where I take it very heavily about whether I could allow that, because it is a puppy, but is it, that's why I'm getting at, like, you gotta really come at me, and I really need to feel like I can own, like, understand this from the community standpoint, and that it isn't just a larger grab with a fancy name, right? So, that's really how I feel, and, and those are the things that you could address and make it feel right to me to be able to approve, so.
All right, well, that's good to hear, Charles, thank you. I will come back and paraphrase that a little bit. Margaret.
As far as the zoning, I agree that the first zoning option is the best, as, as far as what I could see. But as far as everything else goes, the more I listen to everything, the more I realize I don't know very much about this kind of use. And I think my education has to come to a much higher level, and just how these kind of operations work. Before, I could say it's great, I have issues about the traffic, and, and I also, I have issues about the licensing, too, because as far as I, I know, there's not anybody, you know, and I'm not even ready for that kind of care, who doesn't take medication and forgets to take it sometime, and then there's, I mean, everybody has it. And what happens if someone fell and, and needed a splint put on their, you know, it, I'm very confused about what that entails, and the safety of the community, again, is something we're all responsible for. And, and it is, it is a huge building, and I understand, the density doesn't bother me because there's so much space around it, that's, that looks green now, but I'm trying to visualize a building twice that size. Some of that green is gonna go away, and it's gonna just be a bigger thing sitting there. That's, I guess I need to see more and learn more.
Got it. All right. So, where we are, and I hear from the community that's here, and from the other commissioners, that we're at an intermediary step, right here, before getting too much farther down the road with the whole project. So I would ask if you'd be able to return with a more site-specific care proposal for the property. So someone who does this says, this is how this property would be defined, how it would operate, and you've heard these concerns about the licensing, the definition of it, and what happens there, and how to keep the people who are there safe, and also fill in with the community to some extent. So, one of the other things that we have taken on as a mantra with some of these projects is, how does this benefit the community right here, right now? And what will it do in the long term? So, we've got this building that needs to be visually friendly, needs to speak to the local architecture, forget Alan Pennell, please, you know, step away from that and move back towards gable ends and railings and windows and inset portions of the building. We've looked at plenty of motel models that have a railroad hallway, but there are ways to distinguish the outside, so it doesn't appear like that. The facility has to operate so it's straight hallways, et cetera. But when it comes back to community, you know, I think there's an opportunity here, and I've heard it at other types of hearings, and how does a facility like this interact with the community? You did bring up the students, and students need to understand for their future and the community's future, what is dementia, what is memory care all about? And we have lost a lot of touch with that in communities over the last generation. That's my feeling. And I would endeavor to ask you to, ask one of these operators how to create volunteer programs, how to create programs where people come to visit, and/or some of the residents get to go places. So there's a program, as a part of an operator's overall look at it, how do they create this ebb and flow? You don't want to just lock them down. My father had dementia and took a lot of drugs, loved to get out, couldn't let him drive, took him out everywhere, and that's what kept him alive. And the physical activity component of this, just came out in a study that said, the more physically active people are, then their dementia is held at bay to some degree, right? So, how do we create physical activity in a community that has a lot of options? So, the design of the facility has to take that into account, and the neighborhood is saying, you know, we need to improve the neighborhood look and the sidewalks and all of that. So I would encourage you to look at how does the residence population interact and become a part of something that happens. Corder Madera would like to be proud of that facility, rather than just a box on the corner that has these people in it. So I think the opportunity is significant here to raise awareness, and, you know, San Quentin's got hundreds of volunteers, right? Let's get a few dozen volunteers, or a few groups involved with a program over here that brings awareness to this, and it's, it's, it's sort of exciting. You know, I am interacting with kids in their twenties that are on the spectrum someplace, and there's no facility for them to get into. So this is for the larger group of Marin population that needs help and needs awareness, and I would love to see that move along. But to the point is that I also stand for the specific zoning to apply to this property with a better definition of what is the memory care facility, and how do we define that? Do we ask for licensing? Do we not? What converts it to licensing? And maybe your operator folks can contribute to that definition, as to say, this is where we're operating in safe territory, this is sort of amber alert, and then you get up to, you know, red alert with patient care, and what are those different levels? How do you control that and keep the residents safe in the facility, as well as getting to and from the facility? So, I think that everybody loves the idea, but I think it's really gotta get flushed up and flushed out, and there's opportunities here that abound for this. And, you know, to have something like that that could become as well-known as many other types of facilities around the county, that would be very cool if this became a place that people pointed to and said, there's the model for memory care facilities. So, being very careful about the definition and how we proceed, and really nailing it down, so that it's not just an okay to a memory care facility, but it's a really well-defined project that has all kinds of possibilities and extensions, right? So, I think that, come back with some more information, work with staff to develop definitions of memory care, work with your operators to develop that, please address medical care and licensing and all that kind of stuff, and look at the architecture in that space. How do you create physical ambulation? Is that a word? You know, around there, and getting out and about with the right kind of escorts and all that kind of stuff. It'd be very cool, you know, to have this as a place where people go, that's the place where, you know, I want to be if I have memory care problems, right? So, it's just, it's, it's great. So I applaud you for bringing this, you know, as a low-intensity use of that property, and one that the community could be really proud of. So, as, as, as a commercial zoning, there's probably gonna be less traffic than the real estate office, you know, down the street, certainly less than almost any other facility around there. So, the traffic report revised. Spend some time with the wonderful staff that the town has, and create a package of what to come back with.
I just want to add one.
Yeah.
So, Adam, if there is other communities that have defined this use and some kind of planning, like what, how far they took it, if there's state or federal dialogue, because it's a new type that basically is trying, like, from, from a staff standpoint, also, I think, helping inform the commission, and then also set at least other guidelines that they can respond to, that we will evaluate as well, right? Would be helpful for everyone, so.
I'd also love to see more community input in neighborhood, if there are any other neighbors who have feelings about it, I'd be interested in hearing them.
There's this, the lovely new intergenerational center down here, and there could be a, you know, a sort of post-it sticky map kind of thing done, where you could do a Saturday kind of thing, and say, we really want to hear what people have to say. I think that would go, I'm telling you, that just seems to help people understand what they're getting, what you're after, if you have that bandwidth. And I realize I didn't say it specifically enough, but an educational component of this is really important for everybody to understand, what does this mean, memory care, and how are we all facing that? And that, just educating the students, educating the adult population, all of that will be really important.
One thing I was, so the intergenerational is a great thing to bring up, because, you know, that's a fledgling town program, and I think it's geared towards these type of, you know, like, they have classes, and if there's, if there's some kind of public, private, or community synergy that you can explore with them, too, I think that that would be amazing to hear how that, that facility can, can spread its wings and integrate into the greater community, and be a win-win for everyone, also, I think that would be a really good story.
So, you're gonna have a phone call with Adam tomorrow. Say, Adam, what are we doing? So, Phyllis, what?
Looking at the intergenerational program and some of the other things done for older adults, somebody should get in touch with Patty Stollier.
Yeah.
Because that's what she works with, and putting together programs for older adults, and get some input from her, she may be able to help you an awful lot, lives right here in Corder Madera, and would be thrilled. be thrilled to work on this, I'll tell you, because she's really dedicated herself to these type of things. So Adam can give you, you can give him the address and all that. I don't have, I think I have it with me.
Anything else, Adam, you want to?
Well, I mean, I've heard a few just different things regarding size, and I think it sounds like it's not as much if done well and if done, you know, the architecture is important. It does sound like there needs to be, you know, a couple of commissioners want to see a little bit more in terms of actually what that massing feels like as that develops further. But potentially, if these other, if all these other questions are answered in a positive way, this, this sort of amount of floor area and the size is potentially reasonable. That's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing. So I just wanted to confirm that because I think that will be helpful for them as they talk to operators and get their, you know, trying to get them back to come back and talk to the commissioner.
With that, we're taking them at their word, that they need that. You know, we, people always invariably ask, what is the economic model for that? But you've heard that and you know where that is. So we'll take you at your word for that.
And I'm also getting the sense, and I just want to confirm, that some of these other, maybe one, the affordable housing model may not be really a great fit for this particular use, and two, these other community benefits may supplant that actual inclusionary model, which was, in a sense, is also trying to get a community benefit as well, but it may be a different community benefit.
Hotel standard. I mean, if you go the opposite way, whatever we're working out for that.
So I, just to speak to those, so that's helpful if you're all.
What?
There's one thing that none of us mentioned that I think we just take it for granted because we say it all the time, but sustainability and being sure to use sustainability materials, et cetera.
So were, I didn't understand what you meant by, or were you saying that we didn't think it was important to have low or medium?
Well, I'm trying to understand. Yeah, I didn't get this, I get the sense that there were other community benefits that were more, maybe more important than setting the.
I think they are, but I think that's pretty important.
Okay. Good to hear.
And I think that there's probably some rules around about that, too.
Right, and that's the issue with this definition of what is.
Right, and that's what I think Commissioner Menno, one of the ways, I mean, as we, because we're going to be setting rules potentially here, so it's a question of, does, you know, does our current ordinance that applies to multifamily housing and residential development, should that apply for this type of project or some other standard or other community benefits are more important? And to actually get this use here, there may be other things that are more important in this particular case than a sort of making certain units affordable. So that was sort of the, trying to frame that, and I don't expect maybe a, you know, obviously, I think it sounds like we want to, be interested in hearing your response to that, but.
Okay. Phyllis?
Peter, my concern would be that under the state rules, if we start following that, you allow so many affordable units, you get that many more units you can build. I mean, we're going to have to balance, is 71 the max, or are we going to start putting in affordable units and it all of a sudden becomes 80?
Well.
That's down the road, I think.
Well, this is why I think that has to be part of the consideration. It's easy to say affordable, and believe me, I'd love anything that's affordable because I'm closer to than any of the rest of you.
Right.
But if the maximum was .4648, then, you know, you work backwards from that, and that's where you'd end up.
Good. I mean, it brings in, as we've heard in a lot of other projects, I mean, it gets into the financial aspect of it, obviously, for an operator, and it also gets into how you, and this is where I was, the question came up by one of the public commenters about implementation in the Aegis example, and I think there was a fair point. It was, it was, it is complicated. Those agreements have to be tailored very specifically to the model of operation, otherwise, because the fee structures are not like your typical, here's your rent. It's your rent, and there's other services that are, that are included in the fees for living in such a location. And so it's not easy really to create a model, an affordable housing model in this type of facility. And that's where I raised, you know, you know, there's, I think there's ways to potentially do it, but it may not be the same model that we have in our current ordinance that applies to.
You said that was voluntary, right? Because.
It was.
That would be something I would just say to the applicant is, it's, even if we can't enforce it, ultimately, if it's something that's seen as a community benefit and we're going outside the rules anyway, if you volunteer, it can really help it be seen in the overall, like as something worthy of doing. So outside of us working it out, I also feel like if the applicant wants to discover what they are comfortable providing, that that would also help that issue, but.
But see, what they had worked out was this entry fee being waived for a certain number of units. And as we found out, and Jim being a council member, and I sat through that council meeting, sometimes no matter what you do, it isn't enough. And here this woman came about her mother moving in there, and the monthly fee, whatever it is, was still too high and wanted the town to do something about it, which the town cannot do.
And it's probably not entitled. It's just that provider said, hey, we're going to do this for the community, and so they were seen as a beneficial to come in and, you know.
Yeah, so as I say, you have to be very, very careful in what you do, how you do, and the effect. Nothing exists in a vacuum.
We can do, on staffs, and we can do a little bit more work on that aspect, if you think that's helpful, to do a little bit of a analysis of how, whether it makes sense, I mean, to provide some guidance on that issue, if that's helpful.
I think it's going to fall to one way or another. It's either going to be a conformance with a whole lot of rules, or it's going to become a voluntary program of the.
Why don't you get the name of the facility that you said was so good over in Berkeley? If you get the name of it, maybe they have a website that lists some of the things that they do and the services and fees and stuff, and you could, we could pick up a lot of information, share it with us in an email, and we could also look to just get an idea. So when somebody does come to discuss it, we've got a little bit of background, I could at least ask intelligent questions.
Okay, I'd like to call on into this item. Let's take a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Recession. I've got Jim Andrews, a council member up there. Who wants to?
Can I ask a question? Would, they're offering the equivalent of adult daycare for a certain number of people, be sufficient to meet a requirement for affordable? Because that would enable people to stay at home and cut their costs.
It's a different, it's a good question, but it's a.
Throwing it out as a crazy idea.
One together, right.
I just feel that we went through a lot with the ADU and the affordability and the state regulations, literally pushing that farther than any other thing that I've seen pushed. And I think that we need to respect the idea that that's what the state is expecting of communities, and we need to start thinking about that.
I think the impetus here is to define what we want to say about it and what we want it to be, so that we don't have ourselves subject to the state non-regulation. So when you sit down with Adam, he'll coalesce the direction.
Yeah.
I want to thank the commissioners. You've been extremely helpful for us to understand where your head is at, because you are certainly very concerned about the community and the benefits of a program like this in our community. I want to thank the director, because he's put a lot of time on this. I wasn't expecting that I would get a, you know, kind of a report that you have provided for the commission. I can tell you that a lot of things that have been discussed, I think they can easily be answered. You know, the matter of licensing, this is the way this business works, I believe. I'm not in it, but I believe that that's, so there is a fine explanation, what is licensing, what is not. But I think that all of your concerns will be addressed, and we'll come back to you with the responses.
We've gotten out of our normal format here, but thank you, so. No, no, it's all right. So I'll let you guys, I'll get you guys to exit the room, and then we'll move on to our next bit of business. So thank you.
We'd want a nurse on staff.
So.
Live in on tape.
Yeah, live in on tape. So in the Division of Reports, Announcements, and Requests, I attended the October 2nd meeting of the Town Council. And there was a point brought up that I'd like to hear back from Mr. Brown at some point about that gentleman said in 2005, there was a sewer lateral inspection funding to the $211 million, and he's saying, at that time, the town said that the laterals to the property line were the responsibility of the town, and from there on, it was the property owner, whereas now the town says that you're responsible for the entire lateral. Anyway, that'll be interesting to hear if that is found out to be historically accurate or inaccurate. I think the biggest presentation from Mr. Brown in Public Works was about Proposition Six, and the town is squarely behind it, and one of the most significant graphical elements.
Are they pro-six or anti-six?
No, they're for, and why?
Anti.
Yeah.
Anti, yeah.
You said they were for, that's why, I'm sorry, that's why I stopped you.
So.
They want to maintain the tax.
Yeah, they want to maintain the tax base. Correct. Thank you. So from 1963 to now, there's been a 46% drop in the value of the gas tax. So that's rather extraordinary. So the funding has dropped through the floor. And if we do not, if Prop Six prevails, then our acceptable street index essentially goes from a 68 to 51. The maintenance deferred would go from 6.3 million to 25.7 million if Proposition Six is passed by voters. And he provided a map of the streets in failed condition, and it points out how much of Corte Madera is failing, and then also points out the public funding drops for area transit. So it's very important to keep the town travelable. Yes?
Just to follow up on what you said, from a political standpoint, Six is failing, failing by a large percentage. The money that helped pay to go through the process to get it on the ballot, a lot of it came from, as a fact, the State Republican Party, along with Cox, who's running for governor, and they haven't given any money since it got on the ballot. There is no funding to get it out to do the ads and all these things they want to do, which means that it will help it fail.
Right. That's hope, so. Adam made a presentation about the wireless communications facility regulations and the drive by agencies or companies to put in the 5G. And Adam may have more to say on that. The consensus was that let's make, I may paraphrase here, make the existing facilities better and more functional. It's going to be up to Adam to fight back on this to some degree. Then the interesting thing was that even under Mayor First and everyone else, no one wants to consolidate the Corte Madera Sanitation District with the other districts, since they're all sort of failing. That's this large statement, but Corte Madera Sanitation District Number Two seems to be financially viable and well and living, where the other ones are not. So Adam, would you care to expand on the 5G facility or anything else that took place?
I'd also, I attended the one before, and since we didn't have the planning commission, I'd like to at least talk on one, that was a review of planning commission decision and the council's kind of concept.
Sure. Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay. So I attended the, was it September 18th one, Town Council, and in front of them, the there was another, it wasn't an appeal, it was just a continuation of the administrative review related to the approval of the ADU unit, that the planning commission also had seen that the administrator had properly administered the execution of the checklist. So the Town Council unanimously saw that our planning director had appropriately addressed the issues, and to my understanding, that is the last I've heard of it, so.
What would the next step be? They would have to bring a lawsuit?
Yes. Yeah, that's correct. And, you know, I think I mentioned the planning commission's thoughts on, and that the request that the planning commission made was to bring this back, the ADU ordinance back for review, and I think the Town Council agreed that there should be a look at it again as well. So we will have to find the time to bring that back and discuss that. Subsequent, well, I'll just leave it at that. You know, I have corresponded with one of the neighbors and did follow up just regarding some of the conversation that was had about fees and, so, you know, that conversation is ongoing with several, with some members there, several members, and we continue to speak to the immediately adjacent neighbor about the concerns about soil stability and those issues, and so we're continuing to work with the neighbors on those issues. But I have no other information about any next, potential next steps or other, other things that may be considered at this time, and no, and no communication with the applicant. I will follow up on wireless. So we did last week, I did give a presentation. Really, it was a discussion item, just to talk about the various different federal and state legislative efforts to sort of roll back barriers to the implementation of new wireless facilities throughout the nation. And the FCC has been taking the lead to implement the Telecommunications Act and interpret various different regulations, and is actually in their legislative capacity, rulemaking capacity, is sort of providing clarification that further, you know, restricts the local authority to regulate the installation of small wireless facilities, they're called. And these are now being rolled out more and more throughout jurisdictions just because of the anticipated need for greater density of facilities with new 5G networks. Some is, I think, I think currently, there's, 4G is obviously still not fully accessible throughout communities. So some, it's hard to, you know, the carriers don't say that 5G technology isn't out yet, but there are provisions that, you know, I wouldn't be surprised that they're also anticipating the rollout, and as soon as you get one facility up, you can modify them and make them, you know, change the technology. So we discussed that, there are, we talked about our local ordinance that was adopted in 2001 related to this, and we have fairly robust regulations related to wireless facilities on private property, but our ordinance exempts the public right of way in terms of actually regulating that. So it's been handled through encroachment permits through the Public Works Department, and there was a request by the council that we revisit our regulations related to wireless facilities. to wireless facilities in the public right of way, and that includes things like utility poles, and light poles, and things like that. And that's really important, because the federal regulations have mandated that utility companies have to allow these, these carrier, these wireless facilities on their infrastructure. And is there revenue generation for the town in utilization of those right of ways, besides the permit? No, that was another thing that FCC really addressed, called out, and said there's, you know, you can charge for the, basically, a reasonable cost for the permit review and so forth, but also, we, we don't own the utilities, so the PG&E may be able to, I'm not sure how it works between the utility companies and, and the wireless carriers, but I'm sure there's some, some assessment by those utility companies on this.
We don't even charge when private homeowners encroach on the town right of way. We went through that two years ago. Peter and I have, practically, a book we wrote on, of trying to get some kind of an ordinance to start charging like they do in other areas.
Well, I just want to ask, there was an article that I forgot to, that was in the Marin IJ, about either San Anselmo, Kentfield, Fairfax, then doing, going a step further than the model that was discussed, and flat out saying, you know, using some of the same reasoning, but also saying no.
Must have been Fairfax.
There's a movement here, and we're not alone in this, so there's another community.
There is a movement, it's gonna ultimately, I mean, as, as the town manager, Todd Guzman, has said, it's ultimately gonna be decided in the courts, because I think some of this that is being, you know, passed by ordinance, and I should say, there's a Petaluma ordinance, which I think the council members really thought was the right way to sort of go in the direction, but even if you look at a lot of these ordinances, you know, I think it's, even for laypeople who aren't in, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but it's, it's hard to make the argument that they comply with what the FCC just, just sort of adopted. So there's gonna be courts deciding, you know, what, what ordinances are okay, and what aren't, and what you can do at the local level, and what you can't. And it's true, we're not alone, but at the same time, you know, this is an evolving area of legislation, and, you know, I think, you know, we don't want to be out, personally, and we'll, we'll see.
Well, we have a reputation as a town for being among the last to move to these things, and I'm rather proud of that. We wait to see what's happening first, but at this point, our next door, Pat Raffasio and Peter Hensel have are letting everybody know about how terrible this is, and why it shouldn't happen, so it's getting very interesting.
Well, I, I will find that article, Adam, because it was, it was another step, and it was in the IJ.
Yeah, I think we're, you know, ultimately, it's gonna be, we'll have to involve our town attorneys, and there will be discussion about the risks that the town wants to take in adopting.
Was San Anselmo or Fairfax, because Kentfield is not a city, it's county.
I know, there's, there's, it's another one up here, and they, they, they said, no, we're not going there, so.
Yeah, I know the.
It's gonna be, and, so class action lawsuit. Okay, so that's all I have to say, and if that covers any other commissioner reports, does it? Any other?
Did you do finish your report?
Um, yeah, I, I finished my report. I, you know, I did attend a, I could say, I attended a very interesting climate action summit, and at the Buck Institute, it was my first time there, so Phyllis, we can talk after the meeting. But it was.
Quite a place, isn't it?
It was a, it was a, a nice event to sort of parlay the, what was happening in San Francisco, and the international sort of community on climate action, to try to just network and get the Marin County community sort of tied into each other, and there's a wide variety of people from, there's a, you know, sheet metal suppliers, to, in the private sector, to all sorts of, you know, elected officials, and staffers, and nonprofit organizations.
Was this hosted by the Buck Center, or were they just using their facilities?
It's actually hosted by the City of Novato, and at the, and at the Buck Center, so, and in coordination with the Buck Center, yeah.
That's a fairly new thing that they're doing, is opening up the facility for other usage, because.
Yeah, and the executive director spoke, and, and he wanted to do more of that, he was intense.
It is a gorgeous, gorgeous IMPA building. That's how I met IMPA, when he was designing it out of here. It's, it's fabulous. I wish they'd finish it sometime with the rest of the plan, you know, they were gonna have the housing for the research and stuff, and I doubt if it'll ever be done. Like, the Civic Center still isn't done after all these years.
The dome, the new dome's on it.
What?
They've, they're, they've got the new dome up on the roof, restoration, replacement for the Civic Center. Looks nice. Other reports, there's, there's a lot, you'll start to see a lot of the projects that, so restoration hardware, that is, if you haven't seen recently, they've moved into the construction phase, and so the larger parking area has been cordoned off, and they've moved their trailers onto the construction area, and are starting their piles, their pile works now.
Anticipated completion date of the parking lot?
Uh, they are, they are on their, they're, they're trying to get wrapped up by the end of, well, not, you know, end of this month, almost, really, and.
Have you seen lately?
For the holiday season.
Yes.
I was gonna say, yeah.
That's the, that's the idea.
It doesn't look like it's gonna be ready, but I don't know, I don't do construction.
Right.
Peter would be better, you.
And, and then we also issued just recently the demolition permit for the, the Amy's, so that will be in the next few weeks. You'll see that building coming down.
Good.
Right before the rains, let it settle.
So they're not gonna wait for the spring?
After the fire department has their ways with that building, so.
Probably gonna do a lot.
Oh, are they gonna use it for practice?
They're gonna try to do some training.
Oh, good, that's good.
Really?
Yeah.
Are they gonna announce?
You want to go watch?
My, I, honestly, I think.
That's so people don't panic.
They did, they did the same thing in Pleasanton with the Santa Rita, like, old military facilities, and, and we went, as a child, I went and watched, I thought it was, you know, safe, and, and good to see, you know, I mean, invite the children to come to the firefighting thing, see them in action, it'd be, but.
I don't, I think it's more interior, or, yeah, probably not, I think it's internal.
Yeah, but plus the fact, people are so scared now of fire, and so, you know, watching for it.
Right, it might, by alerting the community, it might actually stop them from.
To let the community know that this is not just a, a fire that broke out.
And then, I did make that announcement during the Town Council meeting, and so I should repeat that here. We do, the, the lottery, applications are due for the lottery at the enclave for the three affordable housing units that are being sold as part of that project. That is October eleventh will be the lottery, so by the end of the day tomorrow, actually, I think, is the deadline for applications, so, you know, and the, I read, I don't have the flyer with me, but I did read off the income levels, and just, you know, this, I think sometimes we unfortunately have a misperception about the incomes, and so, especially for the moderate income, I mean, the moderate income unit, I believe, is.
How many bedrooms, too?
It's a, there are three, three bedrooms, and two ba, three bedrooms, three baths, I think, or two and a half baths. But the moderate income for, you can be eligible for that unit, which is being sold for about four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. If you're a family of four, making up to about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, so, you know, it's just oftentimes, the, you have a limited number of people, applicants for that, the moderate income unit. The people who are more into the low and very low income categories, the very low income, by the way, is being sold for a hundred and.
Eleven.
Eleven thousand dollars.
So is that via web, a website?
Yeah, so it's on our website, but it's also Marin Housing Authority is, they are running the lottery, and we have a, the town has a contract with Marin Housing to, to do that for, for the town, and so that is who, you know, that you would apply to, and so I encourage people to go to the Marin Housing, or contact the planning department, myself, and we can try to give more information about that, but.
You said, so it's tomorrow?
Tomorrow, I close the businesses, the application deadline.
Okay, is it a, like?
Minimum three-person household, too, is the other requirement.
But like, if someone just decided to do it tomorrow, there's not a whole, like, I'm just wondering what the backup is to start getting.
No, it's, it's, I, I think you could still do it tomorrow. There is a, there is, yeah, there is a first-time homebuyer class, essentially, that Marin Housing requires applicants to take, but it doesn't, I don't believe it has to be done before you submit an application. It just has to be done prior to, you know, if you, prior, you winning the lottery, essentially, prior to actually being qualified.
Thank you.
So.
We went beyond our allotted time.
I know, so I'm gonna say, we have, we're gonna do the notes right now, and then we're gonna go.
It was nine thirty. Why don't we just adjourn without doing the, adjourn without doing the minutes of that?
Voice vote on that, you know, adjourn without doing the minutes, or do you want to go ahead and do the minutes?
She wants to revise the minutes.
Well, one I was gonna pull, but the other one.
We have two minutes, two sets of minutes.
There are two sets of minutes, but since we were supposed to stop at nine thirty, or take an action, which to go for what, another half hour, and didn't, I was gonna suggest we just adjourn, and do it next time if everybody else agrees.
I will second that.
Okay. Voice vote, yes?
Yes.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.
I'll be in touch with you and make the change.